This is not only a person who has worked his way up through the ranks, but whose roots began in the Inglewood neighborhood. He is a Chicagoan through and through. When we started this process, I stated that we were looking for a generational leader, someone who can get our department into full consent decree compliance, who can boost morale, who can get the clearance rates up and the homicides down, who built and inspired trust and confidence. Someone who knows that we cannot continue to burn out the people who serve our city and that sometimes the best mental health resource is being able to spend an adequate amount of time with your loved ones. We, as well as Mayor Johnson, believe that we have found that person and soon to be Superintendent Snelling. He is the first candidate to be introduced by our commission following a robust and community-driven process. Our commission is very proud of this choice and we have full faith and confidence that he will lead our city and department with integrity and humility. However, our job is to provide oversight and we continue, and we will continue to do so. The difference now is that we believe that we have a partner in this endeavor. Soon to be Superintendent Snelling, we are thankful for your nearly three decade career of service to Chicago and we look forward to partnering with you to move our city forward. I will now give a brief explanation about tonight's forum go. Please note that this is the first of five meetings and that we will be hosting. This will be a public, this will not be the public's last chance to be heard. Tonight, anyone with a comment will have two minutes to speak. Anyone with a question will have one minute to ask that question and then Chief Snelling will have two minutes to answer. A total of one and a half hours will be dedicated to questions and comments. Members of the public who wish to speak will be chosen by random commission staff. Anyone who cannot attend in person and who was interested in submitting questions or comments for the discussion period were previously instructed to send a request by email to the commission. After we introduce Chief Snelling and he speaks for a few minutes, we will have questions from the commission, followed by questions from district council members who submitted requests to speak. We will end and we have allotted a majority of our time today for questions and comments from the public. Before we begin our discussion, I will pass it over to Commissioner Terry, who will give some background on Chief Snelling.
Thank you, Commissioner Driver. So, I'd like to give some background information about Chief Snelling before we give him a chance to say a few words prior to the forum discussion. Chief Snelling is a 28-year member of the Chicago Police Department. Currently, he serves as the Chief of Counterterrorism for the Chicago Police Department and oversees 1,200 department members, assigned to multiple divisions including Criminal Networks, Airport Operations, and the Public Transportation Session. Chief Snelling served as Deputy Chief of Area Two, Commander of the Seventh District, Lieutenant in the Seventh District, Sergeant of Training, Sergeant of Patrol in the Twenty-Second District, and he worked many years as an instructor in the Training Academy. He redesigned the department's current use of force training and modeled around the national best practices with constitutional policing and he has testified as an expert in federal use of force cases. Chief Snelling was a lead trainer for the Field Force Training for the 2012 Chicago NATO Summit. He received his BA from DePaul University and is currently a candidate for a Masters of Ethical Leadership from the University of Chicago. Chief Snelling, please come up.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me? Just want to make sure. Good evening, everybody. First of all, I want to start by welcoming you and thanking you for being here. I want to thank the National Museum of Mexican Art for hosting. And I also want to thank the Community Commission. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Alright. I thought I was gonna have to put my outside voice on. So, I want to acknowledge President Driver. I can tell you this right now, just having a conversation with him and watching him grow throughout this process, actually makes me proud to see a young man from the Inglewood community grow into this position and to sit there and lead this process in the manner which he did. Also like to thank Vice President Oswaldo Gomez, Executive Director Adam Broch, Commissioner Beth Brown, I know she's not here, Commissioner Yvette Loizam, Commissioner Cliff Nellis, who I also see is not here at this time, Commissioner Ramel Carey, and Commissioner Isaac Troncoso, along with all of the district council members. I don't know if any of you are here now, but I just want to recognize you. Thank you for being here. And also, I'd like to recognize the department's District Advisory Council. Do we have any out there right now? Okay, well, I'd like to recognize them and the Community Police Advisory Panel for your work and the hard work that you're doing. So, thank you for that. I also want to thank Superintendent Fred Waller. Stepping in. At much of his time, put his retirement on hold. Again, have to thank his wife, I know she's slapping him in the back of the head right now, so... You know, I appreciate him stepping up and making that sacrifice and coming back to help us out here. When the commission began searching for the superintendent, they pledged to put the people of the city first. I'll go off track here a little bit and tell you that sitting there, going through the questions that they asked, it was no easy task. They were not, they were not playing around, so trust me. This was a very serious process that they took seriously, so... There was, there was no joke about this process. They did an excellent job of doing it. And because of it, I believe it actually made me better. As a Chicagoan, Chicago police officer, and a neighbor, a member of the community, I'm humbled to be chosen to be standing here talking to you right now. You know, as a kid growing up in Inglewood, to be standing here is just an amazing feat. Because there are a lot of people probably in this room right now who don't know or understand that some things are even available to you or the possibility of what you can be and what you can become. So, I would have to say, just going through this process, I couldn't be more proud and more humble to be standing before you right now. As much as I know you came here to listen and learn from me, I'm more excited about listening and learning from you. We can't do this unless we do it together. I can't help you if I don't listen to you. If I don't hear your voices, if I don't hear your cries, if I don't hear your complaints, if I don't feel your anger, if I don't feel your pain, I can't help you. But I guarantee you, I'll be here for that. So, if you're going to cry, I'm gonna cry with you. You're gonna feel pain, I want to feel that pain too. The only time we can empathize with each other and help each other is when we understand each other and walk in each other's shoes. So, I'm here to do that. I know we got tremendous work ahead of us and I'm looking forward to the task. Nothing great came easily to anybody. We're gonna do great things, it's going to be hard work and I'm looking forward to that. Growing up in Inglewood, actually becoming the commander of the Seventh District in Inglewood, later to become Deputy Chief of Area Two, and now currently serving as the Chief of the Bureau of Counterterrorism. It's, it's just an amazing feeling to be here. And if that wasn't enough, now I have the opportunity to help this city sitting in superintendency. I'm committed to the people of Chicago. I'm committed to the officers who serve you, who go out every day and put their lives on the line to protect you. I want you to get to know those officers, I want those officers to get to know you. And I want you to see what those officers deal with, as well as my officers seeing what you deal with. We have to be partners in this. These officers have to be a part of the community. They have to embrace the community and I'm sure they would love it if the community embraced them the same way. This is the only way we get to the bottom of this. We have to listen to each other and talk to each other. When we start to understand that those officers are human beings, who have families, that they need to get home to, who have children, who have sick relatives, these officers are people just like everyone in this room. Sometimes they make mistakes. Sometimes they go down a wrong path. It'll be our job to make sure that we keep them healthy, safe, prepared, and ready to go out and do the job to keep you safe. But we can't do it if we're not working together. There's a lot of diversity in this room, just like there's a lot of diversity around this city. And I am willing to listen to everybody. We don't have to agree on everything, but we should talk about it. And I'm sure that we can come to some type of agreement. I want to ensure the officers and residents that we make real community connections and build relationships in all of our neighborhoods. Collaboration and engagement will always be crucial in the effort to enhance public safety. But in order to be truly successful, truly successful, we all have to hold ourselves accountable and work together as a team. With that, I thank you and I thank everyone for being here. And any questions, I'm ready to take them on.
Thank you, Chief Snelling. We began with a few questions from commissioners, which we will take in alphabetical order by last name. Each commissioner will have three minutes total for questions and answers.
And I'm gonna use privilege, because I'm spoken first, I'm gonna go first. Um, so, I have to go with Commissioner Gomez. Can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
I'm gonna thank you for being here, Chief. I think this is an important moment in the history of Chicago. I actually would not, I don't have any questions that are specific to any of you. And I think the only thing that I want you to tell and only a question that I want to ask is a big question about the commitment that we have to each other. This commission exists as an independent body, independent from the mayor, independent from city council, precisely because historically we've seen that some of those bodies have failed the residents of Chicago in the past. It hasn't just been the police department. It's been a political system. It's been the way that the media sometimes portrays our communities. And to get there, we're gonna need a lot of help. I believe that everyone in this commission is optimistic about the future. And everyone I know in this commission is rooted in wanting the best and the most safe city we can possibly achieve. That means that we're gonna have to work together through a lot of disagreements, as you mentioned. And I want you to tell everyone here, everyone here, that in the community, in the media, I want to know if you are gonna stand up when there is political pressure, if you're gonna stand up when there's media pressure to do the thing that's right regardless of what those pressures might be putting up against you. Because I believe that that's one of the reasons why we are in this position to begin with.
And thank you for that question. Great leaders have no fear of criticism. It's going to come, it'll come in the form of media, social media, friends and family. When you know you're making the right decision, it doesn't matter how much criticism comes your way. As long as I can go home, sleep, and sleep at night and know that I made the right decision, that's the decision I'm going to make. I'll make the best decisions for everyone involved. Not everybody's going to like it, you're not going to make 100% of the people happy because not everybody is going to agree with you. However, what we have to do moving forward is do what's in the best interest of this city. It's kind of like our kids. There are times that we discipline our kids. We ground our kids. We do it to keep our kids safe, to prepare our kids for the future. Our kids don't like it, but at some point when they become adults and they become successful, they understand why we did it. So, when it comes to political pressure, here's one of the things that I'll tell you. And I, um, I feel very good about my relationship right now with City Hall and Mayor Brandon Johnson and his team. He listens, we've had several conversations, and the one thing that I do know about the mayor is that I'm a truth teller, I'm going to tell him the truth, and he welcomes that. The same thing here with the commission. There is absolutely no reason to have an adversarial relationship with the commission. If you have the best interest of the citizens of this city, these neighborhoods, our children, I'm going to work with you throughout everything. Now, like you said, we may disagree on some things because when I'm looking at public safety and I'm looking at my officers, we have to have a balance where we know our officers are safe and our officers can do their jobs effectively when they go out to police and they're policing constitutionally. Because the number one priority right now is to keep every person in this room safe. So, sure, we will have disagreements, but I guarantee you, in the end, we'll agree on something.
Hi, Chief.
How are you?
Good evening. So, during our community meetings when we were participating in the superintendent search process, comments from community that really resonated with me as a mom of four kids came from a lot of mothers who talked about their frustration with the Chicago Police Department over the fact that their children had been victims of violent crime, usually involving gun violence. And they felt that those crimes weren't being solved and they were not feeling a sense of progress on moving towards solving those crimes. So, my question for you this evening is, what would you say to those moms about your strategy first for combating violent crime and then second for ensuring that our clearance rates improve?
Another great question. When it comes to crime, and I'll get to the families in a minute, some of the things that we're doing for families. But our violent crime problem is rooted in a lot of things. Especially the gun violence, a lot of it is rooted in social media, social media beefs, so to speak. Drugs, open-air drug markets. There's a lot of crime based around those particular things. What, what I'm going to be looking to do is every district commander, every area, excuse me, every area deputy chief will now have the autonomy to look at their officers, look at their workforce and their manpower, and start putting those officers in a place that are absolutely necessary for those officers to combat crime. We also have to get our officers better trained, better recognition. We're going to use technology because we've already started doing that. We have our ATC rooms, our SDSC rooms. We have video footage, we have body cameras. All those things that we need to look at to come up with better and better strategies for dealing with violent crimes. We're also working on a crime gun strategy to now start to trace crime guns. We recently had a particular, three guns traced, crime guns, that based on it, we were able to do a search warrant out in Muncie, Indiana. And we know those guns were coming here. We recovered over 800 guns at that location. Now, those are guns that could have made their way to our streets. It's part of my bureau and the work that they do. However, we want to expand that out. Getting back to our district commanders, our district commanders should know their districts better than anybody. So, when our district commanders have the autonomy to come up with their own strategy because there cannot be a one-size-fits-all strategy. Each district has its own individual issues. Some have higher crime levels. Some have less, but there are other issues that ail those districts. But where we see the most violent crimes, right now, we all, we already have the most officers there, but we'll continue to make sure that we have the appropriate manpower in those locations. When it comes to family members of victims of violent crime, we all know and I'm sure there's someone in this room right now who has suffered from it and we know what these families are going through. The Detective Division right now has just beefed up the FLO program. It's a family liaison program where we go out and we follow up with these family members on the investigations and where we are in those investigations when dealing with those family members. Because I think the worst thing in the world for the family is just to sit back and wonder if we're doing anything. So, we're going to assure these family members that we're doing the best that we can to follow up. As far as clearance rates, the mayor made a promise that we are going to add 200 detectives. We've already added 70 and we're going to continue to add as we hire and bring more in. We're going to take a good focus, we're gonna keep a good focus on those investigations so that we can clear up a lot more. The only way that we're going to do that now is to start building relationships. The lack of trust in the police right now is one of the reasons that we don't have people coming forward to give us the information on what's happening in these neighborhoods with these violent criminals. We start to build those relationships, we start to build the trust with the community, I'm sure that we'll have more trust when people want to step up and give us information that will help us solve some of those crimes.
Thank you, Chief, for being here. So, my question deals with what do you foresee as the biggest impediments that you'll face being in this position mainly based on some of the expectations that we're going to hear tonight from community members, district council members? And have you been proactive in identifying the resources that you'll need? For example, financial capital, people capital, whatever those opportunities are to address many of the challenges and expectations again, as I stated, that we will likely hear tonight.
Very good. Money is always an issue, so if anybody wants to throw any up here, let me know. Right, but money is an issue. Any, any finances that we can get to push, to put toward technology is always helpful. And when I say technology, I'm talking LPRs, something to beef up our SDSC rooms, our ATC rooms to expand those things because those are the things that have helped us solve crimes. The LPRs are very important for this reason. There are a lot of vehicles being stolen in the city. Those vehicles are stolen to be used in other crimes. So, when we have stolen Kia's, which is one of the major cars that's being stolen right now, those cars are used in robberies. Our LPRs will help our officers identify those vehicles by alerting us that this is a stolen car, which now gives us probable cause to stop that vehicle. Now, when it comes to, when it, when it comes to the manpower, that is a challenge. It's a challenge that we have right now. However, what we're going to do is assess everything, every officer, every unit. And when we look at all of these units and our manpower, we're going to make allocations that are gonna be most effective for the department and the city. So, we're going to make the best use of what we have right now, but we're gonna continue to recruit and work on retention.
Alright, thank you so much for being here, Chief Snelling. I just have one question. In our interview with you, we asked many well-researched, well-thought-out questions, but I'd like to use this time to speak from personal experience for a moment. A moment that is very painfully seared into my memory because as President Driver mentioned, these issues are personal. Earlier this year, I had a loved one fill out an online police report after their car was broken into and then visit the station just to be told that not only they can't find the report in their system, but that we also cannot fill out another one because the, about the incident because the report is supposedly out there somewhere. We were also never notified as our case bounced between several detectives and was then closed. The citizens experienced reporting crime will teach them whether or not they can rely on the police for their safety. If their experience is disjointed, unresponsive, and broken, it's the first step in breaking the trust they place in our police. But if it works well, it can truly help us solve crime. This is all to ask, do you have plans to fix CPD's incredibly out-of-date police report system?
Well, I tell you, that's something that we're gonna have to work on. Supervision is a key and if we know, and this goes back to our district commanders and our leaders on this job, we know we're having issues with technology. We have to make sure that we make correct, take corrective action on those things. Beyond that though, if we know that we have a system that creates problems in finding reports, we have to find a better way of responding to someone when they call up for that information, even if that means making another report. We have to be responsive to those people who are reaching out for, for help. So, we can't, if we know that we can't rely on that system, we have to have a backup method to help bring some type of comfort to someone who's been a victim of a crime.
And I will, I actually have two questions. My first question, I wouldn't say is necessarily, you know, get that strategy like we have the other questions. I ask for this more of a personal and a character thing and I would, I've already asked you this, I actually asked you this in the, in the interviews, but I would like for you to answer publicly. What are your non-negotiables?
Non-negotiables, one is my integrity. When, when, when it boils down to it, I'll walk away from anything before I give up my integrity, what I believe in, those things that are ingrained in me. I've made mistakes over the years. I've taken corrective action to build myself, to strengthen myself, to do a better job in whatever it is I decide to do, just in life in general. And the one thing that I realize is being able to sleep at night, being able to go home and look at yourself in the mirror is the most important thing. So, when it comes to my integrity, I will not compromise that for anything. I, I have children who I have to face and talk to. And when they look at me, I want them to see a symbol of strength, a symbol of integrity. So, I will not sell out. I'll, I'll put it that way. The other thing that I'm not going to compromise, two things, the safety of the community and the citizens, especially in the most impoverished neighborhoods, and my officers. These officers who are going out here every single day and putting their lives on the line. And what I'll tell you is this, when we have an officer who is not on this job faithfully, who... who engages in acts of willful wrongdoing, I will hold that officer accountable.
Yes, sir.
Because there are too many great officers on this job to allow one or two officers to sully their reputation and their names. These guys are working too hard for that, and we will not tolerate that for them.
And my last question is, um, the average, I think, I don't know who presented here with this research, uh, but it said the average life cycle of a superintendent is about three or five years. Uh, so we, we're gonna, let's say, five years from now. And you're, ten year, ten years from now, twenty years from now, um, you ready to hang it up? You ready to retire, whenever that point, uh, comes? Um, what, what would you want the headliner story to be the next day about your tenure?
He did it. He did it.
Did what?
He made the neighbors, he made the neighborhood safer. He was successful in bridging that gap between the police and the community. And he formed the greatest Chicago. Because when it all boils down to it, until we all start working together, until we all become a team, we're failing every day. How do we become successful? How do we win? No team wins with one person playing hard. Everybody has to play hard. Everybody has to bring something to the table. Everybody has to be dedicated toward making this city better and safer. So if we can bring everybody together, then he did it. But guess what? He didn't do it alone. We did it.
I think that was my last one, I'm actually anxious, just one more. Um, yeah, we, we on time. Um, how, how did, uh, growing up on the South Side, uh, prepare you for this role?
What's that?
Yeah. Trust me, you ever know Cubs, man?
You know, growing up on the South Side, especially in Chicago and, and doing this job, gives me a lot more insight into what people who grew up impoverished are going through, what we're missing, what is needed in these neighborhoods. And I was a kid who grew up with four brothers, two older, two younger, so I was stuck in the middle. So I was the kid that had all the responsibility. However, I saw a drug addicted brother, two older brothers who struggled with education. Both of them have paths going now. I saw things in the neighborhood that were examples of things that I didn't want to do and I didn't want to be. And then sometimes all you saw were things on TV that were aspirational to you that you thought you couldn't achieve. But then someone comes along and talks to you and tells you that you can be more than what you think. You still don't believe it until someone takes you out of the neighborhood and allows you to see something better than what you see every single day. Until we step into the lives of these children in these neighborhoods and start to expand their belief system, their purview of what's going on in the world. They remained, they remain focused on what it is they see every day. They have to know that the world is bigger than a street corner that they're standing on. I was able to see that. And there were individuals who helped me, rather it was a teacher, someone from the neighborhood, the elderly people whose porches I used to sit on as a kid and talk to and have a conversation with. Taking a ride outside of the neighborhood, those were the things that helped me develop. And as a police officer, it gave me the ability to empathize with those people and meet them where they are. Since police officers, we don't need to judge when we get on the scene, right? We're there for one reason, we're responding to see if a crime has been committed and if someone needs help, and that's what we should be doing. We start to meet people where they are in these neighborhoods, start to understand the neighborhoods, start to understand the people. We become better in our response to those people, they come better. This is how we gain trust. So for me, growing up on the South Side of Chicago gave me an education that you can only learn on the streets. So knowing that and being able to talk to people, work in the community with individuals, like Tyler Muhammad sitting there, right? Where we've worked on several issues where the neighborhood's could have blown up, blown up and things could have gone terribly wrong. But I've worked with community members because I understand them and they understood me. I understood the struggle that they're dealing with and what they're going through. And because of those struggles and understanding, we were able to work together as a team and resolve issues that otherwise would not have been resolved.
Thank you, Chief, and, and thank you Commissioners for your thoughtful and insightful questions. Um, seeing no further questions, we will now move on to question the comments of district council members. We have a lot of thirty minutes for this section of the discussion. Before we move on, do you need a break or you, you ready to go? District, district council members who are interested in speaking submitted their names previously, and I will be calling them in the order in which they were received. District council members will have one minute to ask a question or two minutes to provide a comment. Our first speaker is Ethan Lee from the Second District Council.
Cool, it's working. Good evening, Superintendent Selex, now, grateful for being here. I'm gonna start off with General Powell, who I greatly respect, said, "Leadership is solving problems. The day people stop digging your their problems is the day you stop leading." Maybe it got them to a point where they feel you can't help them, or they've gotten to the place where they know you don't care. But either way, it's a failure of leadership. I say that to say, my name is Ethan Lee, I'm a member of the newly elected DC Council from the Second Police District, and as a member of the military, I'm used to leaders that send out directives, which are carried out without apprehension by those he or she has been sworn to lead. My question involves asking you about the clarification of DC roles when it comes to meeting and supporting the offers that you say we need to do when it comes to meeting these officers in any of the three departments scheduled roll calls held by the command. Since our inauguration in the Second District, we have repeatedly asked the leadership of the Second District for access to roll calls, and we have consistently been rebuffed with the excuse being that the upper leadership, which will hopefully mean you shortly, does not allow it. Can you please lay out your agenda on how you will address the wall of defiance by the commanders responsible to you towards allowing unfettered access to the men and women we want to support regardless of the district they serve?
And thank you for that question. The first thing I'm going to do is tell you this. The district commanders will have the autonomy to make those decisions. This would, this will not be something, a, a unilateral decision made to tell a, a district commander what they should and shouldn't do. However, I at some point would like to meet with all of the district councils, meet with district commanders, and meet as a group. Also want to meet with the DAC, because again, if we're not all working in lockstep together, then we're not working. So here's a promise I'll make to you right now. I will hear your voice, and we will get to the bottom of your complaint.
Our next speaker, actually, I'm gonna, um, call the next three, you can, you can line up. First, we have Aaron Vogel from the Ninth District, followed by Alex Perez from the Second District Council, and then Beth Roker, Roford from the Seventeenth District Council.
My name's Aaron Vogel, I'll make that comment. Uh, good evening, my name is Aaron Vogel, and I'm a district councilor from Chicago's Ninth Police District. I want to first thank Commissioner President Anthony Driver and the rest of the commission for all of the work that you put in to the superintendent search, thank you. Um, the ECPS ordinance is just the beginning of what Chicago can accomplish. I have an invitation for everyone in the room, and if what I'm about to say makes you uncomfortable or feel some type of way, I invite you to take a deep breath. In fact, I invite you to continue to take deep breaths throughout the night. Now, imagine a world where we do not need the police. Where all community members have access to what they need to not only live, but to be safe and thrive. What would we need to build and what conditions are necessary in order to eliminate both police and the carceral system? I ask you to imagine a world where police and prisons don't exist because real cultural transformation of a heartfelt system is possible. And it's happening now. Inland Wood is set to become the first date to eliminate cash bail. Mutual aid is an abolitionist practice for public safety. It is taking care of your neighbors without expecting anything in return. I want more than constitutionally driven reforms because those don't work. It is time for us to take a new approach to public safety. So here's the reframe I offer. And Chief Snelling, this is especially important to the community's ask of you as superintendent. Public safety for all is making it so everyone has access to housing, quality education, mental and physical health services, transportation, meaningful employment. It is clean air, water, and soil. Chief Snelling, you can best serve and protect Chicago by advocating for these true public safety measures. I know Inglewood plays a huge role in your journey, and it does for me as well. I spent five years alongside the neighbors of Sixty-Fourth in Otterie, working for peace. I believe in the practice of abolition and transformative justice with every fiber of my being because of what I saw while working in Inglewood. I saw how every institution harmed the community, but none more so than the harm I witnessed by the police.
Or if I'm the them, and most of the time, I think that I'm the them, and I don't think that's the best way for us to move forward. I agree with what you said earlier, we need to work together. This has to be a whole team effort. The community, the district counselors, the commission, the police, the mayor, the alders, we all have to be on this team together. And so I hope that you can get that across to all the people that you are going to lead. I know in the Seventeenth District, we have migrants that are living in the station. I work with the volunteers who are supporting them. There are officers that the volunteers are afraid of. They won't go into the district by themselves because they're afraid. That's not acceptable. So I hope that we can build this better together in the future. Thank you.
Just comment on that real quick. Um, I agree, we absolutely have to work together. There, there can't be an us and them, that's the point. The point is, we have to work together as a team. We can't be separate, because when we think about policing, Sir Robert Peel, the inventor of policing, the police are the community and the community are the police. That's how we have to work together. One thing I will tell you, the, the particular billboard that you're talking about, defending police, that's not a Chicago police billboard, that's not us. It's about vests. It's about, uh, uh, a, a supporter who decided that they're going to help, um, outfit officers with protective vests. So that's what that is. So it's not a billboard for us trying to get support. And it's not the Chicago Police Department. So that's not a billboard we put up. But I, but, but working together, I, I feel that one hundred percent, and I appreciate your passion on that, because that's the key moving forward. So thank you for that.
Our next three are Chloe Vitale, Brad Kessler from the Twelfth District, Brad Kessler from the Eighteenth District, and Leonardo Quintero from the Twelfth District.
Can everybody hear me? Hi, I'm Chloe Vitale, I'm one of the district council members here on the Twelfth. Um, I would say first that I'm really hopeful that the community commissioners have chosen someone with whom they feel that they can build a good working relationship and an open-minded communication. Um, to Chief Snelling, um, I would emphasize the opportunity that you have to leave a legacy of a uniquely transparent department that is accountable to the people. Um, you're at risk simultaneously, though, as you are, your newly elected DCs and commissioners, at risk of falling into the trap of, um, complacency, um, of bureaucracy, and, um, the path of least resistance. So, um, to that end, I'd like to ask what you feel, uh, the three most urgent, um, items of, um, departmental reform vis a vis the consent decree, um, and, uh, what you see as the first steps for each of them? Thank you.
Training, especially the training of our officers, because they deserve no less than the best possible training we could give them. Because if our officers are not well trained, well prepared, they can't help anyone here. Community engagement is huge, because that's going to be our connection. Officers are well trained, well prepared, they're well prepared to help you. And now, our officers can engage with members of this community in a manner that's going to move this department and the city forward. Lastly, again, crime. How do we deal with violent crime? Well, those first two things are the most important thing, and it's going to help us deal with violent crime. Because if we're working together as a group, we're working together as a team, we can actually prevent some of those violent crimes from, from occurring by stepping up and dealing with our children. The thing that we've forgotten, we've forgotten two things, I believe. We fight, we bicker about our relationships between the community and the police. And what we've forgotten are two things. We've forgotten about our victims, and we've forgotten about our children. Because our children have become victims, and not just victims of crime, victims of being ignored. And until we step up and we start looking out for our children in these communities, they grow up to become the next statistic. We can no longer ignore our children. Because when you have a fourteen, fifteen, sixteen-year-old shooter, you can't blame a fourteen, fifteen, sixteen-year-old. We have to start looking back to see where this child was failed. This goes beyond us.
Thank you, thank you for those comments. Um, I'm Brad Kessler, I'm the chair of the Eighteenth District Council. I appreciate you being here. Um, I really value your comments on lifting the community voice, and obviously your comments around you. So towards that effort, I've got a couple of questions for you. Um, one, one of the things that disrupts communities the most around policing, in my opinion, is the change in leadership at the community level, so the commander. In the Eighteenth, we've had an average of eighteen months to two years with commanders. Um, my question to you around that, and I've got one quick follow-up, is whether, uh, there can be a partnership in future commander selections between the district councils and your office, so that we're not surprised by commander choices. The difference in commander, as you can imagine, because you've held that, you know, is this, uh, difference in community partnerships, difference in safety strategies, difference in management supports for, for the staff. The other question comes down to the detailing of officers inside of the districts. It's really difficult for myself, and I'm sure all the other district councils, to actually know how many officers we have, because there's such constant movement in and out of the districts. So this idea of beat integrity seems like a, a goal that we can never reach. And so I'm also hoping that there can be partnership in creating policies to tell us when we get to keep our officers and when they get detailed out. So those are my questions, thank you very much.
Those are very good questions. And here's what I'll tell you. Um, when it comes to the selection of command staff members now, what I'd like to do as opposed to just appointing someone, is to have a process, an interview process, an application process. We're, we're, we're just looking to come up with the best possible candidate to lead a district. We don't just want someone to select, um, a commander because that can be based on favoritism or just simply because I like that person. We want to know that the person who is going to lead that district- We want to know that the person who is going to lead that district is effective and capable of giving everyone in that district what they need. We need people to step up and we need competence. So I want to get away from a system where we just appoint someone without someone who really, without listening or hearing someone, who really wants to lead that particular district. So, but I will say this. I'm willing to listen to any comments or suggestions. Because obviously you're concerned about the officers and the manpower in your districts. Any person who's competent in the job that they're doing would feel the same. So I would be open for suggestions, but we do want to put the best possible person in.
Hello, everybody, my name is Leo, I am here from the 12th District, when raised in Pillson, so this is clearly my part. And sadly, I also lost a friend a block away from here when I was 11. When the police got to the scene, they all jerked me away, so I'm hopeful that we are going to be able to bring social workers into this network alongside and not with the director of the police on that. And all that to say, I know disrespect to you, I do not trust the system because we've promised a lot of things a lot of times. I do trust the commission, so I'm going to go with the flow and I'm going to trust the process. But that doesn't say that, you know, we aren't going to be holding you accountable as well, just like I expect my community to hold me accountable in my role as a PC. And that's pretty much where I want to wrap up with that. Another thing I do want to mention is that recently, there's been some reports from the 12th District regarding four asylum seekers attacking officers in the 12th District. And this was put out by the media without a thorough investigation. So I wanted to say here that we do have some media here that we need to ensure that we step away from xenophobic and white supremacist rhetoric. Because it is leading this narrative where people are now feeding into that and using that as ammo to attack and, you know, verbally or physically to our asylum seeking brothers. So with that, that's pretty much all I got. Yeah.
And our last three district council members are Angelica Green from the 25th District, Eliana Vayena from the 10th District, and Aribera Karen Winters from the 15th District. Okay, no, no Angelica.
Good evening, congratulations, son of Inglewood, daughter of the West Side. I'm Aribera Karen Winters, district council member for the 15th district. But I don't want to talk about district stuff because I'm also a leading organizer with the Chicago Consent Decree Coalition. And that has been like the topic of many, many conversations. However, unfortunately, our last superintendent did not engage with us. And so we are definitely looking forward to you having a meeting with us. And I do mean those of us who are legally bound to do the work around the consent decree. Because right now, the department is at about 5%, right? And that's, oh, 6%? That's still unacceptable because we've been working at it for six years now. And the problem has truly been power equity. Like, the department is not used to community members, especially those of us who have been impacted by police violence, to have voice. And we, and I know you do a lot around the training, and I'm glad you lifted that up. I hope you had a chance to read the report that we did on the use of force working group. I co-chair that working group along with former chief Keno. And the community members, we viewed one of the trainings, we did a report. We also would like to talk to you about the report that we did because it's paramount. Because we do know that training is everything for our officers. We were in the room, and officers were falling asleep, and that's unacceptable. But we also learned that because they get robo calls, which I think is also unacceptable. So meaning they are coming to an eight-hour training after they've worked for 10 or 12 hours. So we definitely hope you meet with the Consent Decree Coalition, put it on your timeline in the very, very near future. And what else? Don't know if you read the report or not. Did you read the report?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you, that's important. And something else I had to say, and I forgot that quick. But again, welcome and looking forward to working with you and making our department better.
Thank you.
I'll say this, I don't know what happened in the past, but we're moving forward. So like I told you, I'm listening to everybody.
Good afternoon, my name is Eliana Vayena. I'm from the 10th District Council, lifelong Little Village resident, but resident of this ward, this is my ward, 25th ward, so thank you for being here. So what I want to talk to you about over the last five months, what it's looked like for a district council member in the police districts. So we've been on the ground supporting our new arrivals, actually, from the 17th District and my colleague in the 12th District. So what we've done is supporting them while they are new neighbors, supporting the new arrivals, making sure that they have food, making sure that they have, you know, access to adequate resources here in the police district. And what we've seen is just kind of lack of support within the police stations. What we saw in the first couple of weeks was people being put outside, and whether that was inadequate. We saw people within the police stations being rolled off, there's no better way to describe it, like, but if they were zoo animals on display. And what we've seen is they're getting their little belongings that they have blankets leaking that's being thrown out. And even personally, I had an experience where I had called the mayor's office, get protocol on what it was to get medical assistance for a front one and three-year-old, and medical assistance wasn't tied by the police station. So within the police station, I called 911 for an ambulance to come and support a one and three-year-old. So that's what we said. That's on the smaller scale, what's happening hyper-local, but this speaks to the bigger issue that we saw that there was a disconnect between the Chicago Police Department, between the mayor's office, with OEMC and the automatic offices. So we saw there's a lot of gaps in communications, we work in silos. So I guess my question, one of my questions to you today is how you, what is your vision? And what is your plan to kind of address those gaps in communication? I know that as of this afternoon, there's a different plan of how to address our new arrivals in the police stations. But again, it speaks to the larger culture of how intergovernmental agencies work separately and how we can work together. And then I have a question from a community member that we just received right now. And what is your perspective and outlook on the value of the city's community violence intervention network? And what role the community-based organizations have? And not only for you or adults, how do you see that?
Okay, that's a lot of stuff.
That was only two questions.
Right here, all right, so let me, let me start with our districts. And one of the things I'll tell you is this, first of all, every person who comes here, I don't care where you're from, what you look like, every person deserves to be treated like a human being. And that's the way we should treat anybody. No different from our own family members. That being said, one of the things that I would tell you is this, and I'm sure, and I'm not saying that what you're saying is not the truth. Because we know things happen. We've seen hundreds of people housed in districts. And we say we're welcoming city. We say welcome, and then we say welcome to this police station floor. Where we have mothers who are nursing in the middle of a floor. Now, they're in police stations because at the time, we were the only ones at the time who opened the doors and said, "Come in." I've seen police officers bring food, buy things for children. Some of them are sitting right here in this room right now. I've seen commanders go down and make sure that their officers were treating everyone with respect. And I can tell you right now, a lot of these officers are saddened by what they see. It's heartbreaking to see a child in a district, on the floor, nowhere to shower. Having to be brought food, nowhere to play, they're just running around that district. These officers have stepped up when they came to that. And I can tell you right now, I've gone to visit some of these districts. And it's a heartbreaking thing to see this. And I ask this question. Where is everybody else? Where are the other resources to come in and help? Now, I've had, just today, a conversation with the mayor and his staff. And they're working right now to try to move these people to better places than being on the floor of a police district. Now, I ask you right now, if anybody, and I know the council members have been there, so you see it, you live it. You know it, you understand it. But I ask anybody in here right now who's trying to go to a district to make a report, when you walk in that district, what do you see? What do you think? When you stand outside of the district, what do you see? If you've ever been walked right by the first district, what do you see? No human being should have to live like that. And those who don't really understand, when we don't have the resources to do something better, who else is stepping up? This is why I say all of us have to be involved. Everyone has to be engaged. It can't just be one entity. As a police department, we're 24-hour service. We're always open. That's why we're expected to solve everything. So just like I would like to see someone other than the police handle mental health calls where we're not dealing with a level of violence that requires the police, I would like to see somebody step in with a humanitarian effort and step up and help out these children and these families who are suffering while sleeping on the floor of a district. Yes, the mayor, the mayor, right now, is working to move these individuals off the floors of these districts. Because what you have to understand is the depressing state that this creates. We have officers who are seeing this every day. Officers see people at their worst. So imagine walking in and seeing children sleeping on floors. And that being the officer's mindset when he leaves that district. And then he goes, or she goes, and they see someone else who are at their worst. We have a lot of police officers who are mothers, who I'm sure see that as heartbreaking to them. We have police officers who are fathers, and I'm sure that's heartbreaking to them because it was heartbreaking to me. So the only thing I ask is that, before we jump the gun, before we just decide that everything is bad, let's look at some of the great things that are happening and how our officers have stepped up. Now, I will tell you this. If we know that our officers are mistreating anyone, not just migrants, anyone, they'll be held to account for that. But let's look at the bigger picture. Let's talk about violence prevention. The most important thing about violence prevention are those people who are most vested in their neighborhoods, most vested in what's right for our children and for our communities. This can't be just something that we say that we're doing, we actually have to be doing it. There has to be action. So when we talk about violence intervention, what are we doing and how do we measure it? I think it's a great thing when individuals step up, because I've seen people do it. I've seen people do it for nothing, because they care about their communities. But when we're funding an effort like that, we have to make sure that we're getting the best, the brightest, the people who are the most passionate about helping their communities and stepping up and getting the job done. And when the time comes, when we have large groups of people who show up, we see a lot of the same people who show up with those young people and help out. We need everybody. Not just those individuals who have that passion and show up all the time. We need everybody to show up all the time. So I love the concept of violence intervention. It would be great to expand it, but we have to have the right people doing the job.
Thank you, Chief. I would like to introduce a group that understands these issues very well. As part of the work that we do in engaging the community members, we also make sure that we involve people that have specific expertise. One of the bodies that this commission has to provide us with important information about issues that we might not fully understand is our non-citizen advisory council. There are three members of that body that are present here and would like to provide some remarks. And their names are Mayra Gomez Santana, Angelina Marillo, and Ariana Correa. They would like to just give a few remarks and to introduce themselves as people that understand and support the work that is being done to empower the non-citizens and diverse immigrant communities of the city.
Good evening, Chief Snelling, commissioners, and community members. My name is Angelina Marillo, and next to me is Ariana Correa and Mayra Santana Gomez. As members of the non-citizen advisory council, we look forward to working collaboratively with you, Chief Snelling, to build a stronger and safer Chicago for our non-citizen and immigrant community. As a proven leader with the experience and internal knowledge of the Chicago Police Department, we hope to meet with you soon to discuss the safety and well-being of all of the city's residents, including our non-citizens, to address the complex challenges we face today in the midst of a humanitarian crisis. We also invite all the district councilors, community leaders, and organizers, and anybody else who wants to connect with us to continue to build a safer and better Chicago for all. Because as we know, our non-citizens are also victims of crime as well, and they can also help apprehend violent individuals and make our communities safer. So we look forward to working with you, and thank you for being here today.
Thank you, I look forward to the same.
So we're about to move on to public comment, but before we do, we did have a list of questions that were submitted ahead of time. Did not have a chance to randomize these, there were 17 questions that were submitted, so would like to, I'm going to ask four people from the audience to just pick a number, 1 through 17. And that'll be corresponding to the questions, so Joe, number?
1.
1. Director Brooks? 8, 1-8. Let's go Nikki? 1-8, 14. 1-8, 14, and 10. So the first question, and I'm going to read it completely, these are submitted online, so these are, I don't know who submitted, but this is the question. "You mentioned that cops should need to love and to show love. Despite this being one of the most outrageous statements ever made, do you believe that full transparency and accountability with full consequences for misconduct would allow people to start liking the police?" "Do you believe that full transparency and accountability with full consequences for misconduct would allow the people to start liking the police?"
No. Transparency is necessary. Transparency is necessary, especially when it comes to disciplinary action. It is absolutely necessary. However, when I made the comment that when we want the police to love others, others have to love the police. Now, we can call that ridiculous all we want. But it's the same thing when we're in contact with our community members. If we're not showing our community members love, they're not going to show it back to us. So what I'm telling you is this, I've seen some police officers do some great things. And listen, no matter what, there are always going to be people who are not going to like the police just like there are always going to be people who are not going to like my skin color. There are people who are not going to like a person because of the There are people who are not going to like a person because of their gender. I'm not worried about that. What I'm worried about is our police officers treat everyone that they come in contact with with respect. And that's how we get it in return at some point. And there are times where officers will show everybody all the respect in the world and they'll never get it back. We can't worry about that. We're worried about how our officers are engaging our people, the people in our neighborhood, and treating them with respect. Now, whether we get it back or not, our officers will continue to do that.
Thank you. Uh, question eight is, how do you plan to work with the newly created district councils to ensure hyper local accountability efforts are up kept for each officer and its member?
Well, again, meeting with the district council members, meeting with the district commanders, and making sure that we're maintaining a good working relationship and we're hearing the voices. We can't ignore each other and we can't just say that, you know, I don't want you here, I don't want you to be a part of what's going on, I don't want you enroll call, I don't want you to talk to our offices. At some point, we have to come to some type of agreement as to how we're going to communicate with each other so that we can build that relationship.
Thank you. Um, question fourteen. The Tribune newspaper reports CPD's current ethnic makeup is forty-five percent white, twenty percent black, and thirty, thirty percent Hispanic, Latino. How does Chief Snellie plan to balance the force to reflect the communities in which they serve?
So, it's kind of a broad question and, and, but I'll, I'll answer it this way. We have a recruitment effort that needs to be built upon. We're trying to recruit officers and we're trying to recruit the most qualified people for the job. So our recruitment effort can't be just one demographic. It has to be an overall recruitment effort. We have to continue to professionalize this job, make it more palatable for those who feel they can't be a part of it. And usually that, that has happened with the black community. We need to be welcoming of everyone, but we need an effort for our young African-American people who've grown up in the neighborhood to give them a gateway to moving into a position like this, not only the Chicago Police Department, but the Fire Department and other city agencies. What we need to do is create programs where those young people can now move their way into a city college if they can afford a university, build up those sixty credit hours, and we keep them on a straight path so that they understand that once they finish, there's a job, there's a city job here waiting for them. Not only will that, will we be able to hire people that reflect the community, but we'll also be helping the community and giving these young people hope and aspirations for things that they can do in the future. So we'll continue to do that. Now, when we talk about neighborhoods, here's my thought process. Right now, the officers that we have, those are the officers that we have. And because we're only a twenty percent makeup of African-American people on this department and the need for young boys and girls in these, uh, black communities to see someone who looks like them. We have non-African-American officers patrolling these neighborhoods. My vision is this. At this point, your community officer in that community doesn't matter if you're white, doesn't matter if you're Hispanic, doesn't matter if you're black, it doesn't matter. What we're looking for is a professional officer who goes into a neighborhood and treats everyone the way they want to be treated. Because, like it or not, those officers are working in that neighborhood. I don't want an officer to believe that he or she is not acceptable in that neighborhood because they don't look like the people who live there. I want these, these officers to understand that these are human beings that they are dealing with and to treat them as such. And it doesn't matter what community you're from, doesn't matter your race. The only way we get to the bottom of healing this department and this relationship between the community is to make sure that everybody in this department is treating everybody the same way they want their, their family members treated.
Thank you. And our last question, uh, was question ten, that was from the list that was submitted ahead of time, and that question is, do you support canceling the ShotSpotter contract?
So here's what I'm gonna tell you about that. I have no power over that. Now, I will say this, it would be irresponsible of me to stand here and talk to you about ShotSpotter, and I have not had a conversation with the mayor about it. So, I have not been sworn in yet. So I'm not sitting in that seat right now, but I guarantee you that conversation is coming. We'll have a conversation about the pros and cons of ShotSpotter. And ultimately, the mayor will make that decision.
Thank you so much, Chief. So now we're going to transition to the section of this forum where community members will be allowed to ask questions. We've allotted forty minutes for this particular section. And we do want to reiterate that you will have one minute to ask a question and two minutes if you plan on providing a comment. So the first speaker we have, and I'm gonna name the first three just to make this easier, Pastor Rich Redman. Then we also have Jurath Lee and Lauren Taylor.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. And the best to you and your blessings upon you, Chief, as you, uh, start your journey. Uh, she, uh, the commissioner mentioned my name, Pastor Rich Redman. I'm so glad that I came up right behind the last question asked and read off by the president, uh, Driver, because that was the question I had. In twenty-eleven, Chief, Rodney B. Manuel has said that he would, as he was campaigning in the black community with Barack Obama. He said he would recruit officers that reflect the community in which they serve. He didn't keep that promise. Twenty fifteen, a few retired black officers made requests to CPD. They quoted these numbers. The breakdown of CPD in twenty fifteen was fifty-two percent white, twenty-three percent black, twenty-two percent Hispanic, three percent Asian. Patrick, uh, I'm sorry, Patricia Hill, who was the executive director, you may know her, I know her, of the African-American Police League, said that this is only a promise that was made and not kept. Please correct. In twenty-eleven, I stood in a news conference and spoke to the same issue with prominent leaders in this city. At that time, we saw the same numbers, but we saw twenty-two percent with the African-Americans being at twenty-two-three. And we saw the Latino, Hispanic being at twenty-two-eight. And we saw the white police members being at fifty-two percent. As of December, we now have these figures. Forty-five percent white, twenty percent black, and thirty percent Latino Hispanic. Our request in twenty, uh, twenty-one has saw a drop of two percent of blacks and eight percent of Latinos. Reflection of community is very important because it's cultural. It is cultural. I'd like to answer you just now. I am the person who worked with the CPD. I'm eight to three mayor.
Sir.
And I would like to see that reflection come into play.
Let me just clarify something. When I say that what we have in the neighborhood is what we have right now, until we make those hires, we have the police officers we have now. But listen to what I'm saying. That this is a process that we're going through right now. Now, I'm not sitting in this seat yet, but I guarantee you this. If you're willing to make me a promise that you'll work with me on a campaign to recruit black people, I will work with you wholeheartedly and I will make sure that every, that you get whatever you need. So I was thinking.
We will do it.
Thank you, sir.
Is Jurath Lee and Lauren Taylor no longer here?
Good evening, Lauren Taylor, resident of South Side, South Shore. We have been honored that you have come to visit us on more than one occasion.
Great barbecue.
Before I ask my question, one of the fellow commissioners, we really want you to think about, we need to think about what it's like to have a police union called the Fraternal Order of Police. An organization that seems by its nature has more reasons to each other than to us. That's something else. My question to you pertaining to this idea of what you were saying in terms of what makes people comfortable about coming to you, coming to the police department, sharing their concerns, fears, et cetera. Let me give you something else that is very fear. Not of the police. Look, these guys on the street, you know it, they don't play. Personal, true story that happened to a family member of mine. Trying to stand up to the guys, you know, in his, on his block in his neighborhood. They knocked on his door and said, "Look, you got twenty-four hours. We're coming back here tomorrow at the same time. If you're still here, it's gonna be a problem for you." It literally killed him. He had a heart attack a week and a half later behind the express car. My question to you would be, what are some of the things, we know that we want to try to, you know, work with, you know, bringing the community together and building the trust, but what can you do for some of the citizens who, like I say, might literally truly be afraid to come to you, to talk to you about what actually are some of the problems that they have in the neighborhood?
So, here's one of the things I can tell you because I, in the bureau that I work in, we, we we see areas where people are prisoners in their own home. Right? They're subject to, subjected to violent crimes. Um, there are some people who have to walk out of the backs of their houses to go to the garage to feel safe leaving. We do investigations, long-term investigations, uh, when it comes to those types of crimes because this can't be a small effort to go over and talk to someone or maybe even just lock someone up for a day, just doesn't make any sense. Because they'll be right back out there the next day. So what solution can we provide for these individuals? These people who feel like they're prisoners in their own homes? Well, when it comes to the reporting aspect of it, the one thing that we do know is that it is very dangerous for people in these neighborhoods to openly contact the police and talk about what they're doing because that puts those people in jeopardy. We do have reporting processes in, in place where people can make these reports anonymously. When that happens, I have a team of people who go out, assess the situation, figure out what type of resources we need to apply to that situation. We've done many long-term investigations. And they take a little while. But in the end, we're able to take these individuals off the street because of their criminal network. And we work with federal partners to, to take these people into custody. Once that's done, we go to those locations and we've got Glenn Brooks here, Director Brooks, who follows up with the cleaning greens in those particular neighborhoods, hoping that if we keep that area clean now, once we remove some of the most violent offenders over there, that we can create an environment that's safer for those individuals and nobody goes back to that spot. So, we're going to focus more on that. Because that's truly important. Because the one, the one thing that was important to me as a, as a beat officer, as a tac officer, I wasn't out there to lock people up. I was out there to protect the people who needed help. That was the most important thing and that should be our focus now.
The next speakers, if you all again can line up here to make this process more seamless, uh, Wal, Wallace Gator Bradley, Jose Manuel Armando, Dave White, and Tyrone Muhammad.
Hey, everybody. Commissioners. Chief, my name is Jose Manuel Armando. I'm a community organizer in the Longdale neighborhood in the West Side, the West Side, of course. Uh, I wanted to follow up on the online question about ShotSpotter. I know you alluded to it, but just to give a little bit of context, uh, state attorneys and district attorneys stop using ShotSpotter as evidence uh, to convict people because they will not allow the defense attorneys to question ShotSpotter specifically by looking at his algorithm to check for, to check for accuracy, see how much it works. As soon as Mayor Johnson won, uh, their stock price plummeted uh, by more than forty percent almost to the hour that the mayor got elected. He also changed his name because they were losing a lot of money and they had bad publicity. Uh, seeing as how, uh, our brand new mayor appointed you, and, uh, my question is, do you share the mayor's vision for public safety? And do you, um, share his view on canceling his campaign promise to cancel the ShotSpotter contract? And will you commit to at the very least not getting in the way of the mayor when he does do this or the city council or the commissioner, or the commissioner here? Thank you.
So here, I'll, I'll tell you again. When it comes to sound detection technology, the mayor ultimately makes the decision. So there's no way I'm going to get in the way of the mayor when the mayor makes that decision. Obviously, there has to be conversation around it. So I understand what you're saying. And again, until I have a clear conversation with the mayor about this, because like I said again, I'm not sitting in this seat, it would be irresponsible to make a full comment on that. But ultimately, I work for the mayor. I'm appointed by the mayor. So when the mayor makes a decision like that, that's the mayor's decision.
Eaglewood? Eaglewood, Eaglewood, that's so good. We, we hear about West Side. Eaglewood is CBS. So, um, with that being said, um, as someone who was born and raised in Eaglewood, who enjoyed committing crime, man, crime feels so good. Crime is good. Yeah, it's the disoccupation. Y'all think it's not? Crime pays, it's often don't pay us. So I'm only saying to you, when you're talking about crime and eliminating violence and crime, you got to understand that the cat, Kajak, can like Kajak. The cats shooting like shooting. They ain't necessarily killers, but they shooters. So, I don't have enough time for us to literally to really say really everything that's really necessary because this room should be filled. And it's saying that the whole panacea of violence and all the evils of society is put on our police. Why the rooms, I mean? So as somebody who enjoy hanging and removing shooters, contractors and killers off the street, you gotta be crazy for that. And I, I gotta guess I gotta be crazy. In a way, but I love my community and I love my people. They need help too. I haven't met any one of these young men that was worse than I was. So if I could change my life, then I always say, and I, I hope, Snellie, it's like, man, I've been violated by birds, just taste my testicles and they beat us for phone books. I never loved the police. And those young men never loved the police. They don't love the police because of the historical nature of what they have been for us. So for me to stand before you all to say that I approve this election, to say we wouldn't have worked with Superintendent Snelling to reduce violence, to end all the issues and ills, man, that's sounding a lie. And you have to have a cultural specific grouping of police in streets to really get at violence. So if you don't, you really don't understand the culture of violence. So that's a must.
Thank you. So the next speakers we have, Mimi Guiracocha, Gabriela Negron, and Bella Bahz.
Buenas tardes. Good evening. Thank you all for letting me speak. I'm Dr. Mimi Guiracocha, Ecuadorian-American public health nurse, resident of the 9th District, and a member of neutral aid group that helps to support the new arrivals at DNI with basic needs like clothing, food, shelter, a woman's shelter, showers, I wish. While I recognize that this situation is unprecedented and that it's gone for way too long, let's face it, I think no one here really wants people sleeping on floors including pregnant people and nursing folks and newborns and children, especially on those cold hard floors in the middle of emergencies that might trigger them and re-traumatize them. While recognizing that possibility of that situation, I also believe that our officers and policies and practices should still reflect kindness, compassion, and consistency and align with the city's efforts while keeping in mind community and neutral aid groups. As it stands however, we have inconsistencies and I don't personally see that very much. At District 9, we have had some troubling situations where officers have yelled at asylum-seeking families and kids for using their phones to communicate with loved ones. We've had officers tell people who missed the bus for shelters because they were literally up the street getting food that they had to leave the station and could no longer stay there and were told that this was protocol and yet I know that that's not protocol. And we've also had situations where officers have told people that if they don't get on the bus that they would be detained for trespassing. Again, not protocol. We've had an emergency situation where a man collapsed on one of the hottest days of Chicago and officers refused to come out and assist the individual. This is not an acceptable treatment of our fellow humans newly arrived who are in survival mode having just crossed continents, literal jungles, some having lost loved ones on the way, seeking a better life, escaping hardship and persecution. So I ask you, as the superintendent of Chicago, a sanctuary city, a city that I was born into, parents of immigrants, and the city that I love, to meaningfully, honestly, and quickly work with your officers to show kindness, compassion, consistency toward new arrivals and proactively develop informed policies and practices that are in line with city efforts and very importantly to have these clear and transparent plans for accountability when that's not followed.
I can promise you this. And everything that you said right there is of the utmost importance. It's like I told you before, these are human beings and they should be treated as such. And we'll make sure that that happens.
Hello. My name is Gabby. Hello, everybody. So I understand that, you know, this is not easy and I, you know, I get it. I've been in hiring for almost 10 years. I know I look good. And at the end of the day, being in hiring and firing and disciplinary action, it's not easy. Having to hold somebody accountable is never easy. I've had to do it and it sucks. Sometimes you don't agree. Sometimes you do agree, but you have to be able to do it in a way that's just, right? So my question is this, you talk about money and budgets and how technology is gonna help you do whatever, though AI is racist, created by racists. And so at the end of the day, efficiency is key in all business, okay? You can't run anything without being efficient financially. And so from 2019 to 2021, according to WTCW News, Chicago Police Department spent $91.3 million to resolve lawsuits outside of their budget, which is currently $1.94 billion, I believe. So like, that's half the budget move. That is ridiculous. And holding people accountable, I have had these experiences. I'm not from, you know, some destitute situation. I'm very privileged. And I've been treated worse than scum. So I can't imagine how everybody else has been treated by CPD and PDs across the country. Teaching and training cannot give you integrity, cannot solve racism. I think I'm okay solving that problem years ago, right? You can't just tell somebody not to be racist and it's fixed. So what are we really gonna do to drive efficiency? Because it's great to say we need to love each other, but if you can't respect me because you see me and you think you know me, that's where the problem starts. $91.4 million in a $1.94 billion budget? That's crazy. Period.
How y'all doing? My name is Bella Bahz. I'm on a public comment, but that's going back to y'all and really more so talking to us. Alright, so Bahz is B-A-H-H-S. That stands for Black Ancestors. He or Healing Society, not bars, not prisons, not police. We heal us. We keep us safe. We heal. Alright, so this message is for the revolutionaries in the room, the abolitionists in the room, and those who aspire to be or who lack a little clarity on what that means, right? So, a couple things. I don't give a F about diversity in policing. Okay, like, we not gonna sit in here and keep acting like Tyree Nichols wasn't murdered by six black police. We not gonna act like that's the answer to our problem. Is that we need more black people to police us. Because I want us to really think about when we say like, oh, people aren't, everybody's not gonna like the police. Even if we treat them with the most respect, they not gonna respect us. We have to really think about what policing is, right? It's not about you as individuals. Ms. Snelling, I'm sure you're a great person. I've heard great things. Wonderful. Good for you. But the thing is, we are not talking about individuals. We are talking about a system that is designed to keep certain people oppressed. A system that is designed to keep the system as it is right now. The economic inequalities, the political, social inequalities, like, police are here to manage that inequality. Alright, not to change anything about it. They are here to manage the inequality that the government made, created, right? So it doesn't matter if we have a more diverse police force, a gentler police force. A gentler police force. If the goal of policing, if once you do your job successfully and you say something about like, you don't want to just arrest a person for a day, that's not gonna do it, right? So once you do your job successfully and you take violent criminals off the street and you say police are still people, we gotta treat them like people. Violent criminals are still people too. I'm sure. And some people, we love some violent criminals. We got violent criminals in our family. We love them. And we not gonna call the police on them because at the end of the day, once you do your job successfully, let me say this last sentence. Once you do your job successfully, you are creating slaves. The 13th Amendment says that you cannot be having slavery in this country except if you are duly convicted of a crime. So you doing your job successfully creates slavery, reinforces oppression, inequality, and it recreates a system of slavery. That is why it will forever be fucked with.
The next three speakers that we have, Danielle Monberga, Joel Eisbaker, Said Montano, and then Carlton Mayor Esquire.
Hi, so I'll make this brief. I just wanted to elevate a question that came from the audience. I understand that shot spotters is a decision that'll come up to the mayor, but I believe the audience is interested in knowing specifically, how do you personally feel about it? Even though we understand it's a decision of the mayor.
Here's what I'll say. When we talk about technology, if it helps to save a life, it's important. I'm not going to talk specifically about a name brand. But if the use of technology is going to help save a life, and I've seen technologies save lives. It allowed us to get there ahead of time. But I'm not going to go down that road for a decision that the mayor is going to make. So at this point right now, how I feel about it pertaining to your question is irrelevant because the mayor is ultimately going to make this decision.
Hello, everyone. Hello, Superintendent. Sawo Juarez Montano from the Mexican consulate. As you probably know, the consulate besides documents and besides issuing papers, what we also aim to do in cities like this, like Chicago, is empower communities from the inside, providing them resources with Spanish speaking and also knowing that they can, in the ground, trust their communities and trust the police. That is why it is important to remind that the cultural sensitivity from every authority in the city will need to keep on going and will need to nurture from what the communities and the people here is saying. Because foreign-born communities will only have some specific needs to trust. So cultural sensitivity will be a key for that and we will keep on, authorities, we need to keep on working together to ensure that nationals from, I mean, Americans and nationals from every other country do feel safe in the city progressively. And we would expect to see that more, more of that coming in the following years.
I agree with you. And that's something that we can actually continue to train on and continue to get that message out to officers. Absolutely.
Thank you. So first I want to thank the commission for holding this public forum. My name's Joe Osbaker. I'm the Labor Committee co-chair of the Chicago Alliance Against Racist and Political Repression. Thank you, comrades. And I did seem concerned when I heard, Chief Snelling, that you were in charge of training the officers for the repression of the NATO protests in 2012. You see, I was one of the lead organizers for the family-friendly march of 12,000 people that marched for jobs, housing, education, and not war. And we experienced the use of undercover cops who infiltrated our organizing. They engaged in the entrapment of three young men who they got drunk and stoned and got them to build Molotov cocktails. Those three boys spent years in prison. I watched the violence against protesters at the intersection of Michigan and Sirmag. The batons that the men came out with were the size of table legs. And I watched as a man got his arm broken. I watched another man slammed to the ground, his teeth busted on the pavement. I watched the teeth shards fly away. Dozens more were gassed or otherwise injured. Many went to the ER. So I'm a little concerned because next year, the Democratic Convention is coming here and we've already applied for permits to march on the DNC, the billionaires of that party and then the billionaires of the other party up in Milwaukee. And so basically, we're here to say that our movement demands that the Chicago Police Department defend and respect our right to protest.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Carlton Team Mayor Esquire. I am the Criminal Justice Chair for the Chicago West Side Branch of NAACP. I'm also the former director of NAACP Nationals Criminal Justice Reform Program. I'm also a former NAACP Legal Defense Fund attorney. I used to be the Policy Council for the Policing Reform Campaign of Work to Washington DC under Michelle and April's leadership. So today, I have one request and I have one question. First request, President Carl Brunson last week hand-delivered a letter that we drafted to the mayor's office requesting a meeting. We have not heard back yet, so we hope that now you're here, that that meeting can happen with the NAACP Chicago West Side Branch. You know that we're also part of the consent decree, so it makes sense that we're involved in everything you're talking about. The fact that we're not, to me, is a little, you know, I just hope that we can work that out. So that's one request. The question I have for you is this, and I did submit it electronically, so it didn't get asked, but I want to ask it. So according to the Police Executive Research Forum's recent publication on your weekly training, they also had a publication that came out last year around training. I know you really hone in on training, which I agree with you. You're gonna have to really hone in on training if you want to improve community police relations. And it's more so about the how to do the training rather than what kind of training you're doing. So what the Police Executive Research Forum is saying is that evidence-based best practice would be to incorporate community members into your trainings, especially that relate to direct police-civilian interactions. For example, implicit bias training, cultural sensitivity training, de-escalation training, crisis intervention techniques, trainings, etc. Anything that involves engaging with community, you should have community members in the training with law enforcement. That's how you start to break up the dynamic of the culture. Because when you bring in outside perspectives who are also experts because they live in these communities, their families live there, their friends live there. So they know, and you know this because you're part of the community, just like you said earlier. They understand the nuances that your law enforcement's not gonna get. And so all I'm saying is if you bring them in to the training, it's been shown to Sina, Arizona, as a clear example, it's been put out there, it can't be done. NAACP Chicago West Side Branch would love to work with you on it. Like I said, we already sent you the letter. Please respond. We'd like to have a meeting. Thank you.
I'll hold you to those meetings because I think that's important. And one of the things I'll tell you with our de-escalation training, 100% right, this is something that we did starting back in 2015. Our de-escalation training after the Little Farm McDonald shooting, we incorporated citizens to come in. We also ran Citizens Academy where we had individuals from communities come in, see how police are trained, put them through scenarios, and got feedback from those individuals also. So let's move forward. We have representation here from the mayor's office, so I'm sure your voice was heard just now.
Thank you. So the last three speakers we have are Krista Noel with WAPB, CAA, and CARPA, and Ellen Corley, and Anthony Bryan.
Hi. I just wanted to say, my brother, we have missing and murdered black women all over Chicago. And one of them in particular is Treasure Hendricks. And I've been working with the family. And we have been trying to get a meeting to find out what's going on with the investigation. They changed detectives. You say you're gonna hire new detectives. You have awful detectives. You need to fire the detectives that you have now before you start hiring new ones. Because they are awful. I've dealt with a few of them. But I, he has the case. And like I said, I worked with the family. We've been trying to get a meeting with the investigator now. I sent her an email. She has not responded back to me. And this is the way you treat murdered and missing black women. You ignore their families, okay? Now, Treasure Hendricks, and I know a lot of times you all don't know who we're talking about.
I know who she is.
Okay. Well, she was found in a cop's RV dead, okay? So her family wants a meeting with IAB. I've sent an email. We are not getting a response. We've been before the police board, now we're before CCPSA. I want you to tell me right now in this moment that you will make sure that we get that meeting and the family finds out what's going on with the investigation.
You stick around to the end of this. I will personally talk to you and get some information from you.
I appreciate that.
Hi, my name is Ellen Corley. And, you know, nice to meet you. My concern is... I, my concern is corruption. And that's what, I've been studying it, and I actually applied to be in your position back in 2020, never got a call. I applied again, this time to compete with you, never got a call. I've understood that there's other progressives, it was written in the city council, that they weren't, that there were other people that were never interviewed at all. And all I've really wanted, I've got a master's in business and education, primarily I'm a research analyst. I would, I would actually like to be, work with you, you know? I go to Brandon Johnson, but, you know, use me as a database analyst who could go in and go through the records and stop corruption. You know, the problem, there's a prosecutor's management information system, there's Palantir system, it has, but it depends on who's analyzing it, and that's where the transparency is. You know, if the records are not there, which they're not, they weren't with LeQuin McDonald, the video is gone, you know, it's, that's the problem. It is the biggest problem. So if you're going to solve it, you have to do that. When I saw that you were coming from a counterterrorism background, I was concerned, because I know I'm basically an intelligence analyst myself, but I realize the way intelligence is in the military, it's more covert operations. And that's the model of counterterrorism. And, you know, what they do is, and I'm very concerned, there's an article, I'm sure y'all have seen it, I would think, this outside quick break, about an incident where you and your partner actually were involved with a corruption setup of someone with cocaine, and those three went down for it, somehow you slid by, you know? And that's the problem, the ones that slide by. Can you answer to that? You know, why? How did that happen? You know, that's real transparency.
Thank you.
Here, here, I'll answer that, I'll answer that. That entire investigation was an investigation by Internal Affairs. The way it was written was not written properly. Those officers were never found guilty of corruption. What they were found guilty of was not inventorying a bag that they recovered, that a gun was in, that they were expecting those officers to plant on a person. This was an inside investigation by IAB, which is called an integrity check. So those officers never did anything to bribe anyone. The other thing that I, that I take particular, you know, that I have a particular problem with, was the way they portrayed these black men with black and white pictures, as though they were mugshots. So, I welcome criticism and all those other things, but I sleep well at night, and those officers should do the same. Because these officers were proud black men who worked and did their jobs properly, and they passed the test.
They, they were convicted, all three of them.
No, they weren't convicted, this was not a conviction. They were not arrested, this was, this was not an arrest.
Thank you.
Hey, everyone, sorry for being late. My name is Anthony David Bryant, I am one of the three third District Police Council members. Right, I signed up late, so excuse me, y'all. My first question is, how do you plan to hold the hundred police officers accountable who are not qualified to testify in court? And then my second question is, I know you was talking really about political pressures. Specifically, how do you plan to withstand political pressure from FOP? The FOP is the Fraternal Order of Police.
Listen, FOP serves their purpose. Right now, when it comes to doing this job, I have a particular job to do. FOP, or anyone else, will not dictate how I do this job. It doesn't matter who it is. Just like outside influences will not dictate how I do this job. I will listen to everyone, I want to hear everybody's voices, and it doesn't matter if I agree with you or not, doesn't matter if you agree with me or not. I respect everybody's comments here today, because everyone in this room is making a comment based on an experience that they've had. So I will not knock down anyone's beliefs, how they feel, what they think. Our experiences dictate the way that we respond to certain situations. Therefore, in this position, in this role, when I have to make a decision, I am going to make the right decision. I don't care what anybody writes, I don't care what anybody says, I don't care what anybody reports. When the right decision has to be made, I will make that decision, and I will not give in to political pressure when it comes to that. And I'm sorry, your first question was?
How do you plan to hold the hundred police officers who are not qualified to testify in court, county?
So, there's, there's a lot in that 100 people to unravel. The courts have deemed in some of those cases where those officers were a part of an investigation, it wasn't that they've necessarily been found guilty of anything at this point. However, however, when we have people who are ineffective to get this job done, to get it right, then they won't serve a purpose for us. So we have to seriously consider what we're going to do with people who cannot serve a purpose for this city and this department.
Yes, sir.
So we have reached the end of this forum. Before I move to conclude the meeting, would you ask if there are any final remarks that you would like to offer there for you?
One thing I'd like to say is, is this, it's an honor to stand here before everybody and have this conversation. And I've learned a lot tonight, because I listen, and I listen to what you have to say. And again, I've said this before and I'll say it again, not everybody's going to like what I have to say. But I guarantee you, whatever it is I say is going to be rooted in the truth. Now, that might not be your truth, might not be your feelings. But, when we go out and police, doesn't matter who you are, what you think, or how you feel about the police as a whole. Our job is to go out there, protect your rights, protect everybody's right in this room to stand up and say what you wanted to say tonight. And to make sure that each and every one of you and your families are safe. We have to recognize in policing where we've gone wrong, and we have to admit to those things. We have to look at the history of policing and put measures in place so that we don't go back down that road. We have to make sure that we're reaching out to our community members to find out how they feel. And we can talk about the consent decree all day, unless we're effectively applying it, it's just a document. We're going to make sure that we make this department better. We're not just going to reach compliance with the consent decree. In that compliance, we're going to become more effective. We're looking at effectiveness, because it's too important to these officers, it's too important to the city, and it's too important to the citizens, everyone sitting right here in this room. So, I will say to you again, we cannot do this alone. We cannot arrest our way out of this situation. We have to be preventive. We can point fingers, or we can become a part of the solution. So right now, I'm dedicated to becoming a part of the solution and getting this job done, and so is everybody sitting up here in this front row. That's all I have to say, but thank you, and thank you everyone for coming, and thank you for your comments.
So I would like to give a special thank you also to the National Museum of Art, Mexican, National Museum of Mexican Art are hosting us. I would like to thank the District Council members who came out and offered their comments. Chief Snelling, I would like to thank you for sitting in the hot seat a little bit with us and answering questions from the community. I would like to thank my fellow commissioners, as well as the public who came out and the media. We ask that you stay engaged with us. Our next meeting of the, our next regularly scheduled commission meeting will be on Thursday, September 28, 2023, at 6:30 PM. We will announce the location at a later date. With there being no further business before the commission, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.